11:00 PM and I am reconvening to open session and calling to order the regular Board of Education meeting for Indian Prairie School District 204 on Monday, May 17th, 2021. Jeanne, will you please call a roll?
Ms. Fostick.
Here.
Mr. Carubis. Ms. Jane.
Here.
Ms. Donahue.
Here.
Ms. Grover.
Here.
Ms. Demming.
Present.
Mr. Rising.
Here.
We have a quorum. Ms. Demming, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will be holding a special meeting, executive session, on the IASB Starting Right Workshop on June 2nd at 6:00 PM at the Kraus Education Center. On June 5th, we will have a Board Administration Retreat Executive Session on June 5th at 8:00 AM at the Kraus Education Center. And our next regular Board Meeting will be held at Matia Valley High School on Monday, June 14th. Ms. Jane, will you share our Board Salute?
The National Merit Scholarship Corporation announced six District 204 high school seniors that were named National Merit $2,500 Scholars in this year's competition. District 204's National Merit Scholars are Vinay Agarwal, Kishore Morti from Matia Valley High School, William Foo, Samir Jane, and Helen Dow from Nikwa Valley High School, and Brindette Sokriti from Wobonzi Valley High School. These scholars were chosen from more than 16,000 finalists judged to have the strongest combination of accomplishment, skills, and potential for success in rigorous college studies. Congratulations to each of you on your achievement.
Okay, next on our agenda is the Student Representative Report by Emily Shaw from Wobonzi Valley High School.
Wobonzi is excited to welcome back graduation onsite at Dick Kerrner Stadium on May 28th at 1:00. After what has been such a challenging year for the class of 2021, this is an opportunity to come together as a full class to signify the end of this chapter. We were able to have the musical with a live audience, our first show in almost a year, and had four nights of showings for the junior version of Matilda. This past weekend, our Model UN wrapped up their season with conference at Matia. The Warriors had six delegates that received delegate awards, including three Best Delegate Awards, one Outstanding Delegate, and one Honorable Delegate Award. This past week, WVH Administration and Teaching Staff visited senior students' homes to deliver Green and Gold Awards to over 90 recipients. Our Green and Gold recognitions are listed on our website and include students who receive recognition for outstanding academic performance in certain departments, student or school scholarships, and community scholarships. It is a week of pride as we truly highlight the work of our senior Warriors. Vocal Pops is happening this week, Thursday night at 7:00 PM in the Wobonzi Valley Auditorium. We've learned how to work with the IDPH guidelines and the safety measures, and we're excited about the pre-sale of 200 tickets for this performance. Wobonzi Valley's media production program won first place in the Live Events Sports Production category at the 2021 Midwest Media Educators Association Film Festival. And we'd also like to take this time to recognize Mr. Steve Penley, who won EverFi's 2021 Outstanding Educator Award. In terms of athletics, as we draw closer to the end of the school year, we continue to be grateful for every opportunity that our student athletes have to participate in athletics. This spring season, all of our traditional spring athletic programs will get the opportunity to participate in the IHSA State Series. These sports were unable to do so during the spring of 2020. This week, our Boys and Girls Water Polo Programs will kick off their IHSA State Tournament. We wish both programs very good luck this week. The remaining spring sports will be continuing their DuPage Valley Conference schedule. We wish them all best of luck as their seasons wind down. Even though this year's been challenging, I'm so grateful for all the memories that I've made as a senior. I've been a part of District 204 since kindergarten, and being a student of District 204 has significantly enhanced my educational experience. Next year, I'll be attending the University of Michigan, majoring in Biology on the pre-med track. Thank you all for listening to me every month to hear what I have to say about Wobonzi. It has been an honor to represent my school. Thank you, and as always, go Warriors!
Good luck, Emily.
Thank you very much, Emily. Good luck and go Blue! Our next agenda item is Public Comment of Non-Agenda Items. It's now time for Public Comment on Non-Agenda Items. Thirty minutes is allowed for public comment, and each person is limited to three minutes. When addressing the Board, we ask that you respect the confidentiality and safety of our students and school district personnel. We also ask that those addressing the Board be cognizant that this is an open meeting and is available to all age groups, and as such, ask that you consider who the audience members are this evening and keep comments age-appropriate. Public comment represents the voice and opinion of the speaker. There will be no feedback from the Board members during the meeting, but follow-up will be provided by an administrator as appropriate. Our first speaker is Shannon Adcock.
Congratulations to this newly established Board. I wish all of you well. I am a mother of three district children, and I represent Awake Illinois, which is a newly established 501(c)(4). We are a social welfare organization tackling issues like, for example, parental rights and critical race theory in schools. Culturally responsive teaching is a phrase that attempts to veil this ideology, but CRT is Marxism repackaged. Many of you on this Board and in the district have openly embraced this divisive pedagogy. We applaud those in 204 who have a sincere desire to educate children and get them future-ready. The battle to get our schools reopened was due to our acknowledgement that a quality in-person education with those teachers is the key to future success. Parents are increasingly concerned, however, about anyone entrusted with our children who has a divisive agenda, for example, breakout rooms on gender and sexual identity during 5th grade social studies zooms at Springbrook Elementary, and 8th grade equity research projects on white privilege at Crone Middle School. All district students should be free to live their truth and not be forced to identify as either victim or oppressor, no matter the transgression of human history, history that is barely being taught at all. Teach the stains and atrocities no questions so that they are never again repeated, but give our kids the big picture too. That isn't revisionist. Where are the inspiring stories of progress and patriotism? Why select only the narratives that embrace pessimism and anti-Americanism? Where are the accredited textbooks? Why are you using non-accredited sources about systemic racism, gender identity, white privilege? The words diversity and inclusion aren't enough to cover up the toxicity that segments our children by your chosen filters to fulfill your pessimistic worldview. No classroom should segment our children by their race, socioeconomic perception, gender, or by to whom they are attracted. Don't dissect our children. This form of education is anti-American, anti-success, anti-inclusion, and most egregious, anti-child. Awake Illinois is comprised of parents and educators who want the future of society, our children, to be educated, not dissected. We are educating others on these issues at awakeil.com. Thanks to Parents Defending Education and the Foundation Against Intolerance and Racism for collaborating with us on this advocacy. When anyone in this district attempts even the slightest step in this Marxist direction to dissect our children, we are watching, we will call it out, and we will stop it in its tracks. We will not tolerate any violation of the Civil Rights Act of 1964. We are Awake Illinois, and you can't cancel us. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dr. Natalie Young.
Kind of tall, okay. Hi, can you guys hear me? All right, good evening. So last week, after sending my 10-year-old daughter off to the bus stop and waving at the driver, I returned home. Minutes later, she too unexpectedly returned home. She was in tears saying she had been kicked off the bus for not having a mask and that she couldn't find her extra mask in her backpack. I immediately asked her, did the bus driver run out of masks? And she told me the driver couldn't give her a mask. So embarrassed and confused, my daughter quickly complied and exited the bus. Once back on the curb, full of anxiety and unsure of what to do, she told the bus driver that she would just return home, and that is what she did. I could immediately see that my daughter was visibly shaken and confused. After contacting several admin officials at the bus company and at the district office, I was completely shocked to learn that drivers in 204 are explicitly instructed not to provide masks to any student, even in the event of an unexpected emergency. To so nonchalantly dismiss a 10-year-old unaccompanied female minor and drive away is reckless. In response to this, for information, the district transportation supervisor informed me that the responsibility of their drivers ends at the curb. I am here today because my daughter was unfortunate, was fortunate enough that I was still at home and had an adult present. This kind of privilege is not available to all of the 28,000 students that you serve, with Illinois, with 204 being Illinois' fourth-largest district. Like many of you onstage, I have been in the field of education for over 20 years. Throughout my tenure, I have been an advocate for the voices of those that often go unheard. I have paid taxes in this school district for 18 years and have never had the concerns and the well-being of children be so completely dismissed. Both Ron Johnson and Dr. Tally were very dismissive. I was told things like, would you send your kid to school without shoes or a shirt? When I asked Dr. Tally as the Board aware of this practice, his response was simply, the Board is not involved in the day-to-day minutia. It is my hope that moving forward, the well-being and safety of children are considered to be much more important than day-to-day minutia. Again, I want to remind you, I am not simply standing here on behalf of my daughter before a deep concern of the safety of all 204 students. They could easily find themselves in the same situation. Also, please be aware, denying transportation is not a common practice. I have directly contacted the 10 largest districts in Illinois and discovered that Naperville 204 is the only one that does not provide emergency masks to children. As a mom, I'm heartbroken. As a taxpayer, I'm ashamed. As an educator and a professor, training the next generation of future teachers, I am saddened. I teach my students that adults should not add unnecessary burdens to children, that to always advocate for children, that to speak up when you witness injustice, and also understanding the reality that school practices, policies, rules, and regulations will always reflect the dominant culture. So you must consider the complexity, diversity, and needs of all your families that you serve. It is my hope this school district 204 holds these same principles.
Ms. Donahue, this week's time has ended.
Unfortunately, reflecting on these things as if you don't. Immediately, expeditiously addressing safety concerns is like this must be swiftly addressed. The well-being and safety of all students, even forgetful children, must be of the most important.
Thank you.
If we can give kids Chromebooks, we can give them masks.
Thank you.
We now move to our, there is no public comment on agenda items tonight. So we now move to our Consent Agenda and Superintendent Report. We will start with the Superintendent Report.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue, members of the Board of Education and the Indian Prairie Community. I want to start tonight by talking about our plans for next school year. Normally, in my presentations, I do not have any slides, but tonight I have three slides I would like to share that may be helpful for those trying to follow along as I talk about next year. The plans that I'm providing are general in nature so that families know what to expect. At our June 14th Board Meeting, we will have more information available. Most importantly, next year, all schools will be in session for a full day with pre-pandemic hours. And so we are expecting our kids to be in session, coming in like they normally were before the pandemic happened. We will have lunches at all schools. We will have separate in-person and distant learning teachers. Safety protocols, as required by the State Board of Education, will be followed, and that includes masks to be worn, six feet of social distancing between students at lunch, and a minimum of three feet of space between students in the classrooms. We fully understand that things are changing almost on a daily basis. As of right now, these are the requirements that the state has given us, and therefore those are the protocols that we must continue to follow. As things change at the state level, we will update accordingly. Remote plans will be shared, meaning who will be the remote teachers, how we'll do remote learning at all three levels, or distance learning as we refer to it, and so that will be shared later at the June 14th Meeting. Information will be going out, next slide. Information will be going out to families, again, about those who would like distant learning. Remember, it is only because of a medical condition. As it stands right now, I am aware that the Illinois State Board of Education is meeting on Wednesday to examine that a little bit more, so more information may come out, but we are going to send out information for families and so that they can apply for that if they so desire. Our middle and high school plans have been reviewed by a set of parents, and then our elementary and pre-K plans will be reviewed by a group of parents in the next week or so. Specifics about the schedules will be shared at the June Meeting, where you'll be able to see when lunches will be served at the middle school level, how lunches will be done, and everything related to that will be discussed at that meeting. But I think it's important for everyone to remember, schools will look, for the most part, as they did pre-pandemic, with the number of hours, lunches being served, children in classrooms, and everything related to that. And so that will be coming, more details, as I mentioned, at the June 14th Meeting. Because of changes at the state regarding our level of openness, each of our high school graduations will take place in one ceremony per school. We were looking at two ceremonies for each of our schools. All ceremonies will take place at 1:00 PM on Friday, May 28th, weather permitting. High schools did send information out last week about the ceremonies and how many people can attend. Each ceremony will be streamed live. The Vaccination Clinic we will have this Saturday at Nikwa Valley High School has been expanded to serve any student aged 12 and higher. With the FDA providing emergency use authorization, we were able to expand the vaccines to all 12-year-olds and higher. Fully vaccinated people have less of a chance of needing to be quarantined, therefore, students next year with the vaccinations in place will find fewer opportunities to be quarantined. At the Board of Ed Meeting last week, last two weeks ago, Mr. Matt Shipley discussed the stimulus funding we have received from the federal government in three different installments. Overall, we'll receive approximately $13 million. I want to share how we will be using some of that funding, starting on July 1st. I'm very happy that we will be reducing class sizes in grades K-2 at all of our elementary schools. Currently, we have class sizes at non-Titel 1 schools ranging from 27 to 30 in a class in grades K to 2, and then our Title 1 schools from 23 to 28. Next year, our plan is to have class sizes no bigger, on average, than 25 students K to 2 in non-Titel 1 schools, and no bigger, on average, than 23 at Title 1 schools. It's important to remember, this is on average, so you could have a class that could be one-over or so. Though we will still have class sizes bigger than our surrounding districts, this plan moves us closer to those lower averages. We will hire a mental health wellness assistant director who will coordinate our mental health wellness for students and staff. We know that we need to focus on mental health as we start the new school year. Having a person who can oversee mental health will ensure we have an effective program in place to support students and staff. We are going to hire a literacy coordinator, K-8. We need to have a person who has the background and specialty related to literacy to coordinate the programs across all of our elementary and middle schools. This person will be able to provide direct support to our reading specialists and schools, and provide the systemic approach to the reading that needs to be in place. We will have a math coordinator, K-8. This coordinator will oversee math implementation in our elementary and middle schools, and will be able to support schools as they work with children in the area of mathematics. We introduced a new math program last year, and there's more work to be done related to the implementation and training. This coordinator will help to ensure we have a systemic approach to math instruction across all of our schools. Those positions, the math coordinator, the literacy coordinator, the mental health wellness, and the reduction in class sizes, are positions we will keep over the next several years. We are not going to give those up. We will have some positions that will be just for a year. We will have four and a half FTEs, Full-Time Equivalents, at the high school level to support mental health and academic support for students. We will have 6.5 FTEs, Full-Time Equivalent, at the middle school level that will support academic support for students. We will also use funding for after-school activities at all levels. Funding will also be spent on materials and resources to support lunch for next school year. And we will continue to examine the needs within the school carefully in determining how best to use funds. We believe the spending mentioned above will directly support our students and teachers by providing additional resources in our schools and central office to address our academic needs of our children, the professional needs of our staff, and the social and emotional needs of both our staff and students. As always, we will evaluate the success of our positions with accountability measures. Ms. Donahue, I'll send the meeting back to you.
Thank you. Next on our agenda, Alicia Johnson will present information regarding the Indian Prairie Education Foundation. Welcome, Alicia.
I'm Alicia Johnson, the Executive Director. Is that a little better?
Yes.
Great, thank you. I'm Alicia Johnson, the Executive Director of the Indian Prairie Educational Foundation. And first of all, I just want to say thank you to Dr. Tally and all of the Board members for the opportunity to be here tonight. As we are coming down to our last few weeks of school, just wanted to take this chance to share about a few programs that are occurring now with the foundation. And for those who may be listening or watching, who might not be aware of the foundation or who we are, a little bit about our background, we were started in 1988. So we are in our 33rd year of partnering with the district to really enrich education for our students by supporting their academic, their artistic, and their emotional and their physical needs. Some of you might have heard of some of the programs that we do support. Some of those programs are robotics, tournaments, after-school clubs. Others in the past that we have supported are our free cardiac screenings through our Young Hearts for Life program. We also have supported social and emotional learning for some of our students that struggle with that, as well as music and fine arts programs throughout the district, including our wonderful holiday concerts, our Meet the Artists, Artists in Residence, and our Fine Arts Festival. Of course, we love to recognize our amazing staff and teachers through such programs as our A+ Award. So those are just some of the programs. One other one I wanted to mention that has really been extremely special during the challenges of COVID is providing support for our families that are struggling a little bit through our Kid Essentials program. So tonight, I wanted to share a few about, a little bit about some of our programs. You might see that I'm sporting our Team IPF Bright Yellow Shirt. Tradition, I usually wear it towards the end of the year to promote Team IPF. Team IPF was created eight years ago. We are in our eighth year. It's crazy to think about that. We started this program eight years ago to raise funds for our school through a focus of being healthy and coming together and working through a common and to a common goal. Each year in October, our large group of charity runners and walkers for Team IPF come together downtown Naperville, and we participate in the Naperville Healthy Driven Half Marathon and 5K. Last year was a little disappointing because of COVID. We did participate, but it was virtual. So we are so excited to bring our team members back together this year for a live race with an option of participating virtual if our members so choose. Since 2014, it's crazy to think that we have had over 2,000 team members represent District 204. Now, because we are a charity team, each of our members pledges to raise a certain amount each year. This year, it's $150 minimum, and everything raised, 50% of that goes back to the individual schools. Since 2014, over $951,000 has been raised for District 204. Absolutely amazing, and we could not do it without the support of our team members. Our team is comprised every year of staff, teachers, parents, even some students, community members, business owners, and alumni. So we are so thankful to have a wonderful group of people that really care about our district, about our students, come together and participate in this wonderful event. I did want to let everyone know that registration is still open. When we put the slide together, we had 171 members on our team. We're up to 176 now, so there is still time. We invite you to set a goal, get healthy. We have been on the sofa with COVID long enough. Set that plan and come out and join us. We appreciate. Dr. Tally has registered. We have past Board members that have registered and are on Team 2021. We have our current Board members that are registered. We have our new Board members. So thank you for registering and representing our schools, all coming together. It's a fantastic feeling being in that charity tent downtown Naperville the morning of October 17th, all of us coming together, working towards that one cause. So thank you for that. Any questions, feel free to reach out to me. There is a direct link there with information about registration. And of course, none of this is possible without our wonderful Team IPF sponsors. And two that I just want to mention tonight, our presenting sponsor has been with us for several years, and we certainly appreciate Charles Ruttenberg Realty and Motto Mortgage. Ray Zabelski has been a supporter of ours for years. He's a former district father, parent, and his son now Grant with Motto Mortgage is a Wobonzi grad. So we certainly appreciate their continued support as our presenting sponsor. And our platinum sponsor this year is our own Aramark. So we certainly appreciate their support in taking such wonderful care of our district buildings. Another program I did want to mention tonight is our Gifts of Gratitude program. This is a wonderful opportunity for, especially for parents, maybe of children graduating, 8th graders, 5th graders, really anyone, to recognize and honor staff and teachers with a year-end message through a very customized Gifts of Gratitude certificate and letter. Through a small donation or any size donation to the foundation, you can let them know how much they are appreciated. This is our last week, so we will be taking those donations and creating the customized certificates and delivering them before the end of school. This will be the last week through May 21st. And all funding that comes in for this wonderful program will support our teacher integration grant, innovation grants. There is a direct link at the bottom of this if anyone would be interested in learning more about the program. And none of these programs would be possible without the support from our community, from our parents, through the, through donations. So we are so grateful for that. As you are registering for next school year, '21, '22, we would encourage you, if you are able, we appreciate the consideration of making a donation through the registration system to the foundation. There's also a direct link if you would like to donate directly through our website. So in So in closing, we just want to say thank you once again to the administration for your leadership throughout this challenging year, to the teachers and staff that have put in so many hours and have gone above and beyond, to the parents and the students who have stayed the course. We say thank you, and we hope that you all have a very happy and healthy summer. We are looking forward to next year. We will have some new programs and initiatives to share with you and a new fundraising event that will take place in March of 2022. So we'll tell you more about that in the fall. But thank you all.
Alicia, how long is, how long is registration open?
So that's a great question. Registration will be open a little longer this year. It will remain open until the very beginning of August.
I will be signed up by tomorrow.
I'll hold you to that. I know you will. You have been a very consistent member, so we appreciate that.
So thank you very much, Alicia. As a very proud board member myself of IPEF, the organization does wonderful things for our district and for our schools. I would highly encourage everyone to participate in the Gifts of Gratitude and sign up for the Team IPEF. You don't have to be a runner. I'm a walker, and there's lots of us that will be walking, so don't let that stop you. So thank you very much again for all you do.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we move to the consent agenda items. Please identify yourself as you make a motion, your motion or second. I need a motion for the approval of Consent Agenda Items E through L.
I'm in for motion for Consent Agenda Items E through L as presented. Mark Rising.
Natasha Grover, second.
Any discussion? Jeanne, please call the rule.
Mr. Rising.
Yes.
Ms. Grover.
Yes.
Ms. Demming.
Aye.
Ms. Donahue.
Aye.
Ms. Jane.
Yes.
Ms. Fosdick.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we move to our action items. I need a motion to adopt the Illinois Association of School Boards Code of Conduct for members of the school boards as presented.
I need that the code of conduct be approved as presented.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Jeanne, will you call the rule?
Ms. Demming.
Aye.
Mr. Rising.
Yes.
Ms. Jane.
Yes.
Ms. Fosdick.
Aye.
Ms. Grover.
Yes.
Ms. Donahue.
Aye.
The motion passes. We will now get an update from Dr. Tally regarding the student board representatives.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue, members of the board. I want to share with you that a group of students, high school students, presented a proposal to administration about having student representative, representation on the school board. Currently, as you know, we have three student representatives now who provide an update about what is happening in all three of their high schools, and they have done a great job all year. These representatives are not part of the Board of Education. The citizens of Matia, the Wabonzi Valley Youth and Government, and the representative students from Niqua Valley are proposing that each high school elect a student member who will sit on the board for the year. The proposal provides for a process by which the students will be elected and roles and responsibilities for the representatives. I want to say I do appreciate the work that the students did in researching the issue and presenting their proposal. It is my recommendation that the board consider putting together a committee that will examine the proposal, work with the students on the logistics necessary to operationalize their plan.
Any discussion or questions?
This is, is this something that, I mean, is this something you need our kind of feedback to see if we're all in agreement with kind of moving forward with this? And then you'll present us with a plan as you kind of look into it a little more?
Sort of. From that standpoint, we really, I would think it'd be great to have a couple of board members working with administration on this so that we can determine what this will look like. There, there are a lot of moving parts to this, from the election of the representatives to their role and responsibilities. Just one quick thing that comes to mind. For example, there's always the annual state board conference. Would the representatives even go on that trip? There is just a lot that one needs to consider, and so I really would like to know whether this is something the board wants to continue to move forward.
I think the plan is at the retreat to have this as, setting up a committee as one of the items for us to discuss.
Yeah, and I know myself and Natasha met with those student representatives. I know, I believe Mr. Razak, our former board president, has met with them. I just want to echo what you said, that they put extremely, a lot of amount of time in there. It was a very comprehensive and well-thought-out proposal that they worked out with their students, their teacher advisors. You know, I, I think all of us on this board definitely want to have our students' voices heard and represented it, represented. And, you know, they can always do that by emailing the board. So we welcome students' feedback absolutely all the time. But, you know, I think, I look forward to administration looking into this and seeing how this could possibly work.
Okay, nothing else? All right, thank you. Next is the legislative advocacy update and the Board of Education update. Does anyone have any items?
Ms. Grover. I just wanted to talk about the IASB resolutions. The deadline is, I sent an email to everyone. The deadline is June 23rd. So if you have any resolutions, if you have any questions, please contact me because we have to vote on it prior to submission. That's all I have.
Okay. All right, time to adjourn. Please identify yourself as you make your motion or second. I need a motion to adjourn.
Natasha Grover, motion to adjourn.
Second, Susan.
All in favor?
Aye.